I assumed he was ready. There we go. All right. Good evening. We're going to call this a board meeting to order for a second time. Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are at our changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda, board members.
I want to pull 8.09. And 10.07.
Are there any others, board members? And I believe we have an emergency item.
We have one emergency item that you have in front of you.
And we will deem that appropriate to be accepted onto the agenda. So at this time, we are on approval of the minutes.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the school board workshop, May 21st, 2018, the executive session for collective bargaining, May 21st, 2018, an executive session for collective bargaining, May 29th, 2018.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You don't have representation or public input. Wow. Okay. We are on our attorney's report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay. No unfinished business, so we are on the consent agenda. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 8.08, 8.10 to 10.06, and 10.08 to 10.13.
Board members?
So moved.
Second.
Second to Mr. Dodd. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. We will start out with 8.09. Dr. Burns?
8.09. Okay. Um, I wanted to ask, is Mr. Weeks here? Can I have, um, can we have Mr. Cre- Mr. Wheeler come up?
Dr. Wheeler?
Thank you.
She just asked for Dr. Wheeler to come up. If you could come up, Dr. Wheeler, we'd appreciate it. I'm not... Oh, no, to the...
Here, I got a seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Wheeler. Dr. Burns?
Yeah. So this is the, um, this is software that we're using to convert our old computers to the new Chrome style, right?
Correct. It would load the Chrome operating system on the older computers.
Okay. Is this, is this, um, the $500,000? Is this technology only funding?
No, it would, it would come from the schools.
Oh, okay. So this is coming out of...
Convert those.
So this is where like if a school has this device, it seems to be on its last leg, it's dying, this gives it some new birth, right? It kind of breeds some new life into it by...
Operating system, the Chrome operating system that has a smaller footprint, so it would, it would, it would load and work a lot quicker and faster. And I do have Mr. Weeks here who can...
Oh, then that would be great. Yeah, because I wanted to hear more about his vision.
Well, he was supposed to be here.
I didn't, I didn't warn him. So, um, I was hoping to hear more of the vision for converting these and how they were part of the new technology rollout.
And I, and Mr. Weeks was planning to be here, so, uh, he may be running late.
And this was part of his presentation that he gave where he shared that vision, where he talked about it was more affordable rather than purchasing new Chromebooks to be able to take these older devices and for, I think it was $25, $30, whatever the licensing is, convert some of these streams that are just sitting in closets into Chromebooks so they can utilize them instructionally as well as for assessment purposes. And so we've already had some schools where they had purchased a lot of these computers originally that were just kind of dying on the vine. They've been able to purchase them. Wendy Hill is a good example of how they've invested some monies into revitalizing those old computers, saving costs, saving some money in the long run and being able to get more computers in the classrooms at a much faster rate and a much less costly rate. And so I think that that is the intent, is that to open this up for other schools who are wanting to do the same, who have these computers sitting on shelves and convert them at a much cheaper cost than purchasing brand-new Chromebooks.
I mean, I think converting makes sense. I'm just...
We have a work order right now for 700 of these to be converted over the summer, so, I'm sure there'll be more.
Right, but that's like, okay, so that's, I mean, that's sort of what I'm surprised at because is the $500,000 price tag.
Yeah, it's a purchasing threshold, so, uh, I don't think...
Just don't want to ever meet it.
I don't think we'll hit that, but there's, you know, it is a threshold. We have about 26,000 computers in the district right now, so I guess if the district wanted to convert all of them, we could certainly hit 500,000 pretty easily, but I don't see the need to convert all of them. You just want to convert the ones that are sitting on shelves, HP streams, and some of those other devices that are old, having a hard time booting up.
But Dr. Wheeler, what?
Oh, Mr. Weeks.
I knew he was coming.
Don't worry, don't worry. I handled it for you. No. I'm sure they have more questions that I wasn't able to answer for you.
But, but as I recalled in our little discussion we had, that what this did, the 500,000 not to exceed was to, it comes through your department, but it allows the schools to be able to go out and do this.
Correct. We, we would manage that, but the schools would use their funds to do...
It's their funding that it comes from, not from Dr. Wheeler's funding.
Right, okay. It's just such a high threshold.
And they can always put a $200,000 threshold. The, the intent was that this be able to cover the course of the year, not really knowing how much it's going to cost, and so they don't have to keep coming back to the board asking us to raise it each time. So you just, it's just kind of a blanket amount, and they'll spend up to, not to exceed that much, but as he says, it's not going to be that much.
So how much do we figure it'll be?
It's the schools' own funding anyway, right? So, so the school comes forward and says, "I've got these 10 computers to convert," and so on. But another school comes forward and says, "I've got 100," then you go forth.
Yeah, we have, I think, a couple hundred of them at Eustace High School that they're wanting to do right now.
Well, and I was wondering if you divide it by 40 schools, it's only about $12,000 a school. So then that threshold becomes much smaller than $500,000, which is a giant number, but when you look at the number of schools we have and the dollars available, and now, Mr. Weeks, there's your transition time.
Okay, segue. That's cool. Yeah, um, a couple of things. One thing that I checked this afternoon, because we were going ahead and starting working on the, excuse me, the conversion process, is we have about 780 in the pipeline already. And so that's before the fiscal year, before purchasing closed out and the fiscal year flipped. And I talked to several principals who have a desire to do it once the fiscal year flips, because that's when they'll have funding available to it. Right now, we estimate, out of the entire fleet of HP streams, just kind of sort of based on like conversations we've had with people, probably close to 25 to 30 percent. So I think we would see somewhere within like 2,000 to 3,000. But we did just open it up to a new generation of HP streams. The HP stream was sold in Generation 1, Generation 2, and we actually were able to work with the vendor. They originally weren't going to cover Generation 2, and now they are. And so that opens up us to another couple thousand devices. Um, one thing about Neverware, just to be, as far as a project as a whole, the components of us being able to do this conversion are the Neverware license, which is like $13 and some change, I think, as you saw in the quote, and then a one-time purchase of the Google Management Console, which is applied to the device. And it's about $25, and that allows us to give a estimate on it and do all that type of stuff. The other thing I was going to say is that that $13 cost is recurring from year to year. Let me tell you what we kind of anticipate will happen. What we anticipate is, is that this year, there'll be a lot of those devices that may come in, but as normal, some of those devices are anywhere from three to five years old. So as normal, things like batteries start to go out, monitors, keyboards, that kind of thing, you'll see that probably swell and then decrease, but potentially one of the reasons why having that threshold so high is that would cover potentially multiple years of like the license being renewed, because we have to pay $1,350 a year. I still think the return on investment is wonderful, honestly. I mean, for $14, that device gets kind of a new life, and I'm telling you, those devices are completely snappier once we do this. I mean, they start right up and then they go, so.
Okay, so this $500,000 is a multi-year contract. And then my other question that I had that, um, in the meeting that wasn't quite answered was, um, how, how are you, are all of these, I mean, you're talking hundreds, but the numbers say thousands, right? So, um, if we convert all of these to Chromebooks all of a sudden, how does that work with your training of teachers so that we're making sure that the teachers are guiding the teaching as opposed to the technology guiding the teaching?
Yeah, I, I think that's huge, too, because one of the things this is allowing schools to do, and I already know schools, we have an elementary school that's getting 50 converted, and part of it is, is they haven't been able to quite raise the money for the Chromebook itself, or like 50 Chromebooks itself, but for a minimal investment, they're able to get on the platform, and they're able to get those in teachers' hands, so we can start to get used to it. One of the things that we've tried to really manage about the process is that there's a form that gets submitted by the schools whenever they kind of raise their hand and say, "We want these devices," and then my team of instructional technology facilitators basically gets an alert, and then we directly address the administration like, "Hey, you're getting Chromebooks. This is a chance for us to start training you." So in a way, part of the reason why we wanted this project is while we were doing this kind of methodical march of these devices, we didn't want to leave anyone behind. We thought this is another way to kind of sort of close that access gap. But the other thing that we were also looking to do is get in there early and start being able to train teachers on the device instead of potentially some schools having to wait a little longer. So it's just another angle of attack.
This won't overwhelm you with trainings. This is actually going to help you...
Yeah, to, to be honest with you, it kind of gives us this like, kind of gives us like a beachhead in a school, and the hope is, is that by the time we get to that school and they roll out the wider initiative, then it, it feels pretty natural. There's already people in there that have been exposed to the method that we're going to use. And you're right, like, it's all centered around, I think the, the heavy lift on this to some extent is the instructional piece, which is it not just being, how do you say this, the technology and then let it go teach the kids. It's showing how you can do like, again, authentic literacy and all these other strategies using the device. So it gives us kind of a head start in multiple, you know, like everywhere in the district, honestly, so.
Okay. That makes a lot more sense to me.
Mr. Weeks can make authentic literacy even from robots. It's amazing. I'm just going to say, to see him in action with a group of our teachers and students is, is just phenomenal. So I'm really excited about the things that are coming.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Okay. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of 8.09, the cloud-ready buy Neverware.
Board members?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right, we are on 10.07. Dr. Burns?
Yeah, 10.07 is, um, this is a dress code that bothered me last year, and it still bothers me. I feel like I have two girls and two boys, and it's, I feel, I still feel like it's difficult and a challenge to raise strong girls, and that when we tell our girls that their clothing isn't appropriate because they're wearing leggings under a dress that is of appropriate length, that we're over, basically over-sexualizing them. And it, this, I just feel like this policy focuses on girls and, um, not our boys and is, you know, a little bit discriminatory. So that's where I am with it.
Do you have any insight? I know that...
I do want to mention that, that this request was made by the SAC committee of the school, that it wasn't principal-driven. So they've had a conversation about it. They called me about it, and, and I support the individual school and understanding their culture, and so I would ask the board to support it.
He actually said what exactly I was going to say, that this did come through their school advisory council, which consists of students and parents, and so I, I agree that, that my recommendation would be to support the schools and their individual school cultures and the things that they feel are beneficial to them and their students.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? You're fine. All right. Superintendent, I know you made your recommendation. Will you officially make?
I recommend approval of 10.07, the waiver of the school board policy 2.25 of the dress code for Lake Manila High School.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. We are on...
It doesn't matter, whatever you prefer.
So we'll go ahead and visit our emergency item. Superintendent?
So you have before you an emergency item, and this is an emergency just based on the, on the timing of the request, which is my recommendation for an allocation of up to 16 school safety guardians to comply with Senate Bill 7026. Just to go back in time a little bit, you, the board approved previously that we engage in a cooperative agreement with local law enforcement. You know, I've been working with the sheriff and also with each of our local municipalities to place an SRO into each of our elementary schools, again, knowing that our middle and high schools already have SROs. And we did discuss at the time the challenges that these individuals will be facing as municipalities and as a sheriff's department. One is the, the, the number of individuals who are out there, because there's such a large demand for these folks, is, is slim. So being able to hire enough was one concern and challenge, as well as the cost of the SROs. And asking the cities to dip into their pockets a bit is a, is a heavy lift, but I'm really pleased by those who've been able to come on board last week. The city of Taveres voted to support us with an SRO in the elementary school. Also, Howie in the Hills is going to be covering Lake Hills for us, so we're excited to engage with them, as well as Mount Dora, who's actually picking up a second school for us in our elementary world. But we have 22 schools, and so we've been able thus far to get four of them covered through the cities. I'm still working with the sheriff to find out exactly how many he can hire. It's kind of an unknown as he's advertising and trying to hire individuals. He has that number. And then we also, the board approved that we train school administrators who voluntarily want to serve as school guardians. Again, in our elementary schools, that we haven't had as many interested in that simply because of the timing, the, the training that needs to take place for these folks. Remember that they need 132 hours before school starts is a big commitment of time as they're getting ready to start school. So we want to be able to, to certainly be in compliance with the start of school, knowing that these folks, we don't have that many that will be able to serve in that capacity. So we have a number of schools. Still, the number is unknown, but at least 16 that we still have uncovered. That number will go down as tomorrow I visit with, I know Mr. Dodd will be with me as we go and, and speak to the Clermont City Council, and then Dr. Burns will be, and I will be speaking with Fruitland Park. And so there's others still to be coming in the month of July. I'm also speaking with Groveland and with Astetula, who are also very interested in engaging. And there's others who I hope will come on board as more and more cities want to partner with us in this endeavor. So I'm asking for the maximum number of allocations. Again, they won't all be used or filled, but at this time, I kind of anticipate, anticipate that we'll need anywhere from six to 11, depending on how many the sheriff can, is actually able to hire. But we do need to get these positions posted, begin taking applications for these individuals. And we do have the job description that you've just approved on the consent agenda, and so I'm asking for the approval of the 16 positions in the event that we're not able to get an SRO or an administrator as a guardian in these schools prior to the start of the school year so that we can comply with statute. So again, the recommendation is to improve the changes to the staffing plan to include the addition of 16 school safety guardians for the upcoming school year.
Board members?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Yep, sure.
Um, one of the things that was, I, I have questions on the guardian program in general also, so I think this would be appropriate timing. My constituents have asked me, um, will they know which schools have the guardians and which schools have SROs? I mean, it might be obvious which schools have SROs, but parents are asking me about, will they know which schools have guardians? Will our high schools and middle schools have guardians? I don't even know these answers.
So of course, all of our middle and high schools have an SRO. There are some administrators in our middle and high schools who have asked to, to serve and volunteer as school guardians, and they will be trained. So there will be, is that second line of defense, which is what we talked about in the approval of the, the recommendation at the last meeting, is that we will have some guardians at the middle and high schools who are eligible to serve.
So then, um, it was not clear to me, and I re-watched the tape, that guns will not be in safes. They will be concealed carry, correct?
That's correct.
So at the middle of school and high schools with fights, we're having concealed carry?
For those administrators, yes.
That seems like a hazard to me. Um, so my questions were which schools have guardians, whether it was safe, um, in middle schools and high schools, and in the elementary schools, the parents want to know.
And I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Johnson, because I don't, I don't know if this is going to fall under the provision for safety and security if, for schools, for us to publicly talk about who has what.
I, I think we're going to have to have an initial meeting out of the sunshine to discuss the level of security that the board wishes to have regarding those particular issues. And then a secondary issue is going to be, given that level of security, what is or is not appropriate to have in the sunshine. Our position continues to be, as we had presented earlier, that when it gets down to decisions that lay directly to safety and security of the children, that we have the right to discuss those out of the public in order to make sure that we don't publicize those various security issues that we're trying to establish. But again, I think it's going to be a two-step process. I think, you know, it may be that the board decides, well, we want everybody to know where all of the security is. And if that's the case, then any discussions regarding that security would have to be made in the sunshine at that point in time. So we need to have that first meeting.
And can you speak to why we've decided? I mean, I know that, I know that everyone has to be by the guardian law, that the guardians have to be qualified to conceal carry, and I've been through that training. But why are we choosing to have them actually carry on campus as opposed to keeping the guns in the safe, which is what we presented to the public?
We only presented that, that was the discussion when we had teachers involved, that the teachers were going to have the biometric safe with the vest, with the gun, that administrators always were going to be carrying from the very beginning.
Without the understanding of everybody else but me?
That's what I understood when we talked about, and that was the initial, when the sheriff was here, that was...
I know, yeah, I remember when the sheriff was here.
In that it was teachers involved. If we did that, that they would be the ones, because we didn't want the teachers to have their weapon on them at all times because of being in the classroom.
The administrators are the ones who break up fights.
So...
Go ahead.
So, so they're going to have to make sure that that weapon is in a secure area on their possession so that it is not able to be overwhelmed. I mean, there's different places you can carry these weapons, and nobody can get it but you.
And that's all part of the training. I, I know that Ms. Roy has spoken to that very question before, and I don't know if you have anything to add to the discussion as he's been meeting quite a bit with our local law enforcement. They're preparing now the training. They've established the training dates and are working through that. I know that that is part of the training about how do you ensure that your weapon is secure when you are in the midst of other obligations, so I don't know if you want to speak to that.
That is correct. So part of the training, there's going to be a tactical self-defense portion with the training. So with that, it's going to teach any of the administrators or anybody actually going through the course how to maintain complete control of their firearm while it is on them. All the holsters that we'll be using will be not just a, a general, somebody's not going to just take a gun and stick it in their waistband. Okay? So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be in a secured holster. There's going to be a snap lock on it, so a lock's going to have to be released. The other part to remember, though, is that it's going to be concealed. So it's not going to be out in open carry. So it's going to be less apt for somebody to go, "Oh, I see that gun. I'm going to take that gun," and they're not going to know who has it. So those are our additional defenses to protect us from any of that happening.
Okay.
And, and my big thing about the administrators is if we're going to do this and we have voted to do it, then to me, it's, it's kind of like, why do we have a gun over here, but we have the administrator here, but we have the threat in between the administrator and their gun? So if they don't have their weapon on them at all time, to me, it's futile. You know, then we do away with that part of it. But, I mean, to me, that's part of it. They're, they're there to do that, so therefore they need to have that weapon with them.
I don't know. I personally have lots of questions about implementation, but I knew we couldn't move forward with anything until we knew which direction we were going in. So I'm under the assumption still that as these things continue, that we'll have this meeting that we're going to have in the shade, and we can, we can all be on the same page with what is that, what's the policy going to look like, how are we going to inform the public or not inform the public? But that's going to come for sure. I don't, I don't think we have all the answers tonight, but we will.
We don't.
We just got the direction. You know, it was, it's, it's been so much discussed that now it's time to develop all of those things. And, and I believe we'll have board member input in those decisions as well.
Because one of the things I learned at the, um, at the FSBA meeting was that Clay County, for example, and there's other counties that have done this, have chosen to only use the, this portion of the guardian that we're working on right now as their whole backup force. So they've gone with Clay, I'll use Clay as the example, but they've gone with as many SROs as they can afford, and then they're filling in with all, uh, school safety guardians as opposed to administrators or teachers. So I didn't even know that was an option, or I didn't realize it was an option. It took me like rereading our options like three times today to even understand what this option was.
I think the one thing to consider is it's got to be a combination approach, because it seems like it's unlikely we're going to get all the numbers we need using one single strategy. Even if we had enough money for the deputies, we wouldn't have enough qualified applicants walking in the door, even if we got every, and, and we don't have every municipality coming on board. We clearly didn't have every administrator coming on board, and, but, so if we put all of the eggs in this one and we said we need to hire 20 of these people, would we have 20 qualified applicants walking through the door? Or would we like to use some of our own folks that we already know and trust to be that person versus...
And is it, is it possible to say that these people, because, I mean, there was a fair outcry from the public for there to be ex-police, ex-military. And I know that we would like to preferentially hire ex-military and ex-police. Is there, is that something we would want to put into this?
They have to be, right, by statute?
No, I don't think they have to be.
They, they don't have to be, I think, preferably, to your point. That would certainly be those that I think would rise to the top of our interview list, or those that do have that experience, kind of in a tiered approach, looking first at those that have former law enforcement experience, and then looking at those, and there's other districts who've done that, they've, as they've, applications have come, come in, they've kind of tiered them. Then they looked at those who have graduated from the police academy but yet may not have been on the job, is that second, and then that, that third tier of those who have had either security experience or relevant military background, those types of things. So I, I think we would certainly do that. Again, we don't know how many applicants we're going to get. I saw in the paper that Volusia County had 180 applicants, and vetted about 120 of them as viable candidates. I don't, not sure how many we'll get. But certainly we'll be looking to, to advertise that we are looking, and I, I'm hopeful that we're going to get some strong candidates and, and get some great people in our schools to help secure our campuses and our kids.
Great. Any other questions, board members? No?
Point of order?
Oh, point of order. I don't know what point of order.
Since this item was not on the agenda, and there was no opportunity to sign up and speak ahead of time, would he appropriate the public to speak?
Yes. Yes.
May I have that opportunity?
Yes.
Stephanie, you might repeat what he said.
Do I need to repeat what he said? He just asked...
Yeah.
He just asked that. Since this wasn't noticed on the agenda as an emergency item, could he come up and speak to it? So, Ms., Dr. Tibbetts?
First off, and I haven't seen this anywhere, what is going to be the impact if we don't have somebody in this school on August 14th? Do we get fined? Do they send state troopers? I haven't seen that anywhere. What happens if we don't have everybody in time? So I think before we have to rush into things, let's get the answer to that. Secondly, I do share Dr. Burns's concern with any non-police officer carrying a gun. I spent 15 years on a college campus living with a security force. We did not have them carry a gun for one reason. And it will take students in a school about a week to know who's carrying and who isn't. You won't keep it a secret. They know these things. They find them out. Once they find them out, that person can become a target. You need to understand that. As you place guardians in schools with guns, they become a target, possibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tibbetts.
Do we have an answer for the penalties legally? Do we, have, has, I, I, I read the statute today, and I couldn't figure it out.
No, like most statutes, there's no specific penalty outlined in the statute. Of course, there are several ways to penalize the school board. You could have a, an individual could file a, a action that compel us to comply with the law immediately, which would then require us to use whatever money we had to do it regardless... regardless of whether it was the 1.10 million, 1.9 million, or the $200,000. The, the auditor general, I guess, could make us refund all the safe school dollars that we have and have spent, because those were issued under the condition that, that they be spent only on the Guardian program and the other two programs that were part of the statute. So, and you could be found guilty of nominal damages and a declaration that you're not following the law, quite frankly. So those provisions in this particular statute have not been obviously very strictly enforced to date. There was some discussion that everyone was in immediate non-compliance who didn't already have a complete police department and have guards at every school in the county. So it is not without its potential penalties, but there is no specific one in the law that was passed.
We won't be ready. I mean, we, we'll, we'll have our plan ready, but we won't be, like, everyone's not going to be trained by August 10th.
I don't know, it's pretty intensive.
That's the plan.
That is the plan.
If we have everybody hired by the July deadline, when the, the planning of the training is, they'll be ready to go by August 14th.
And the, the training is intensive. I've, I've been given an overview.
That's why we're going through it.
Well, you have, what, 17, first, is it 17? 17 in the first class?
Up to 35.
No, 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 but 17 have already signed up for the first class. There's going to be two classes, right?
17 for the first class.
Yeah. And it's really about timing. I, I just want to comment about this rush, too, that, that we have an obligation to protect our kids. And I take this really personal, because we lost 53 since I was sworn in, 53 innocent people. We have, we have a program in place, and it shouldn't be, what's the penalty? What is the penalty if someone came in and shot our kids? Seriously. So I say we move forward, and we move forward as quickly as possible to protect our kids on the first day of school. That's where my head is.
Other discussion? Okay, Superintendent?
I've already made my recommendation. I would think we've had a, you did, we have a.
We have a motion and a second.
And a second, yeah.
We lost in this discussion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was the emergency item. We are on final approval of policy 3.10, administrative organization.
The matter before the board is final approval of policy 3.10, administrative organization. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this policy, please come forward to the podium at this time. Don't see anyone coming forth. Madam Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Superintendent?
I recommend final approval, policy 3.10, the administrative organization.
Board?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And now we are on our revision to the 1819 district staffing plan, and Dr. Landry, I believe, is going to come forward to give us a brief presentation.
We've talked a lot about school safety, and we, we know that the other side of this is ensuring that we are, we're meeting the mental health needs of our students, and so Dr. Landry is very pleased to, for the opportunity to kind of talk about, you remember, we have a pot of dollars specifically to our mental health resources and supports, and so she and her team have been working on what that plan will look like, and at the request of the board, she's going to just give us an update on that.
Yes, thank you. I'm honored and excited to be here with you this evening to be able to share where we've come from, where we are, and some pretty important things that still have to be discussed. This is not the final plan. This is just a draft that I'm sharing with you this evening. Before we can submit to the state on August 1st, you have to approve our final plan, okay? But this is just me sharing where we are, and I'm going to tie it back to the board agenda item this evening of the staffing plan and the six positions for the mental health specialists. So I'm going to refer to the PowerPoint. I want to remind you that we're talking about the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, affectionately known as Centerville 7026. And tonight, what I'm going to talk about specifically is the Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan. So here, before I get to the basics, I did want to let you know that on your behalf, I have attended multiple state-level meetings where personnel from the various departments at the state have come to provide the districts with guidance and sometimes direct interpretation of the statute. So I do, I, I have had the pleasure of interacting with folks at the state level to get some of the answers that we need as we continue forward with our plan. So some basics here. Lake County Schools is getting about $1 million from the allocation given to us by DOE. Charter schools must be offered their proportionate share. If they choose to take their share, what they have to do is submit a board-approved, I mean by their governing board, approved plan that will be submitted to us, which we will attach to our plan that will go to the state by August 1st. Again, we have to submit our plan by August 1st. And then per statute, we also have to gather some very specific outcome data and submit to DOE beginning in September of 2019, and then every year afterwards. Per the statute, 90% of the money that we receive must be spent on, and these words have been chosen very specifically, so I'm paying very close attention to them in our plan, provision of mental health assessment, diagnosis, intervention, treatment, and recovery services to students with one or more mental health or substance abuse diagnoses and students at high risk for such diagnoses. So from those words, what we can infer is that the money primarily is to be used for students who are already diagnosed with mental health or at risk. So there are Tier 2 and Tier 3 students that I will introduce you to our tiered structure in a few slides, but essentially, those students who are already at risk or experiencing difficulties. Also, the statute asks that we coordinate services with the primary care physicians of the students and anyone providing mental health services already, which makes sense. If they're already getting mental health services on the outside, we should be coordinating with those professionals. So our relatively large plan that is still in draft form is a series of goals, and for each goal, there are objectives, and each objective in my big plan has an implementation plan, its own implementation plan, outcome measures, teams of people responsible for the outcome measures, and, 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 the outcome measures let us know how we're doing, that we met the objectives that feed into this goal, okay? So goal number one is develop, implement, and monitor the delivery of effective, evidence-based mental health services. That's huge, right? So we have like 10 objectives under this one goal. The first one is increase student access to mental health supports at schools by maximizing the time that existing mental health professionals spend in direct services with students. So as you already know, we have several groups of professionals that already work for us who are considered to be mental health experts. School psychologists, school social workers, to some degree, school nurses. We're going to fold them in a little bit more strongly, because they don't get a lot of mental health training in their profession, but we're going to fold them in, and school counselors, certified school counselors. So one of the last slides I'm going to show you is how we're under, we're under allocated in those positions right now. So we do have those professionals, but we don't have enough of them, and they're not doing direct services with students in the ways that support mental health. So we'll talk more about that in just a few slides. So the second objective, and this, here's where the board agenda for tonight comes in, was to create district-level positions to oversee school-based mental health services, evaluate the effectiveness of our plan, and provide direct services to the highest-need students. So just want to pause there for a minute and tell you a little bit about my vision for these six folks. So I'd like to hire six mental health specialists, and these folks will be highly licensed or certified in the area of mental health. So they will be able to deliver, and bill for Medicaid, by the way, which helps us, direct services to the neediest of our students. And when I, when I think about the neediest of our students, what comes to mind are students who are returning from Baker Act, students who are returning from DJJ facilities, students who go to Alt Ed in lieu of expulsion, those students who are already identified as having very significant behavioral or mental health problems. They come back to our system, we need to be doing something with them to wrap some services around them. So to start with, those highest-risk students would be the one that these six folks would be addressing directly. We organize in student services, the way we roll out services is by region, aligning with the rest of the district. So my thought is that if we hire, if we're able to hire six highly qualified people, there'd be two per region. So these two individuals would be responsible for overseeing the mental health plan in that region, monitoring its effectiveness, collecting outcome data, as well as providing direct services to the neediest of the students in that region. So these folks would come in and have a full plate, but that's, that's good, that's what we would want. And I'll give you, I'll give you opportunity to ask questions at the end, I suppose, because you may have some. Okay, so that's the six positions that are on the staffing plan. Another objective, and this is another big one, develop universal screening protocol for the district. I will tell you that districts across the state are struggling with this one. This is a very serious consideration. What we're talking about are universal screenings for mental health issues. And so some of the things that we had, would have to consider, and there's discussion to be had here, are things like, what grade might we want to do that? I will tell you, there are some districts in Florida that are screening every student in their school district. There are some districts who are choosing not to do universal screenings. There are reasons, in my mind, to be cautious, because once you start screening students, you have to be prepared to have the manpower to provide services, direct services, for every student who's identified. So there's a caution to be had, there's a good reason to be doing it. As you all know, we get more and more children in our system who have more serious mental health needs. Every year, it seems like we get more serious students. So screening those kids when they're young, or when they're at ages that are developmentally put them at risk, I think we should consider that. So there's more discussion to be had around universal screening protocol. Still in goal one, another objective, establish and integrate mental health component across all tiers and grade levels of our multi-tiered system of supports. We already have that in place, it's a strong infrastructure. I'm going to show you a slide in just a minute about how that works. Another objective, create referral pathways document for Lake County Schools. So this is a toolkit that came out from, from a national SAMSA, because we need all persons who work for us to understand how to get a student from point A where they're struggling or at risk to services. Parents, the students, teachers, everyone, it should be a common language. I see a student who's struggling, I need to know how to get them to the help that they need. So that's going to be a referral pathways document that we'll create. Create a system for monitoring all kinds of outcome data required by the state and above, and then provide relevant and ongoing mental health professional development for all Lake County Schools employees. This is in the statute, okay, that we have to provide mental health awareness for all of our employees. The state has already chosen the program. It's called the Youth Mental Health First Aid Program. They're going to set up a train-the-trainer rollout of the program. Lucky for us, we already have trainers here in Lake County Schools who can train on this program. It's an eight-hour training, and it's akin to mental, to physical first aid. So you've taken CPR first aid, so you know what to do if you come across someone who's hurt. This is the same thing for mental health. You see someone who's hurting, here are the things that you can do immediately to help them, and here are some ways that you can get them to professionals for help, okay? So there's a train-the-trainer model, so we will train, what the state is asking us to do is train a small cadre of professionals at every school, and then ask those folks to be responsible for the two-hour online training that the state will be providing, okay? So the state is really stepping up to help make this consistent across the entire state, okay? So we're in a pretty good position on that one. Okay, the second goal, create, maintain, and enhance collaborative partnerships with community health partners. We have a lot of community health partners, and we want to make those relationships stronger. For example, we have state mental health agencies and discretionary projects that our collaborations could be stronger. So we want to get those folks at the table, collaboration and establish protocols with private agencies. We have 10 private agencies in Lake County that do counseling for students, and we have agreements with them. We also have our state partners, Livestream, they do lots and lots of counseling and support for mental health as well, so we just want those collaborations to get broader and deeper. You may review, you may recall the REACH events. We made lots of new partners when we had those three events in the district, and we want to renew some of those partnerships. Law enforcement agency specifically, as it refers to mental health, Baker Acts, and then, again, planning on meeting with all the community partners to talk about barriers. Okay, here's another goal, we don't want to forget parents, right? We want to reach out and have parents have access to relevant and ongoing mental health information. The Youth Mental Health First Aid, by the way, can be training for parents as well, and we'll provide some of that. Community knowledge and awareness on factors related to mental wellness. We work very closely with the Department of Health, and so we'll be doing more of that to reach out to the community and help keep them informed of how they can build protective factors with their children. Training of prevention of suicide, this has its own goal, because it's important to us, and I want to specifically, I'm planning for, to bring a program here to, to plan for awareness of prevention of suicide, okay? So that's, has its own goal. Okay, let's, so, so here's this triangle, I don't know if, if you'll have seen this triangle before, but it's a tiered system of support that we already have in place, strong infrastructure for students who need intervention in the areas of academics and behavior. And all I want to do is add our mental health component into this triangle, because it already exists. We already have problem-solving teams on every campus that know how this triangle works. So essentially, all students are getting Tier 1 interventions. So for mental health, what that would look like would be SEL curriculum at a school, restorative practices, PBIS, those programs that are broad and apply to all students, that would be a Tier 1 kind of a program. For Tier 2, those would be the students who are at risk already in some way, and so they could engage in small groups with counselors, that might be an example of a, of a Tier 2, or restorative circles that we're starting to learn about, that would be an appropriate Tier 2. Tier 3 are those small percentage of students who are very high-risk and need intensive services, those where, where the six mental health specialists probably would come into play, where they would be able to give direct services to those students. And this is just another way to break down what we have in terms of Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. My hope is to offer options for each school. So what's not optional is that you have to have some programs and some services in place at every tier, but I want them to have a menu of things that they can use, because every school community and every school culture is a little different. This is not complete. This is just the beginning of a list for options that they will have. So this is the last slide, and what I wanted to do is just show you the mental health professionals that we currently have, our current allocation and the recommended allocation by the National Association associated with each group, as well as the state. So for school psychologists, our current allocation is 1 to 2,300, and the recommended allocation is 1 to 500. For social workers, our current allocation is 1 to 2,800, and the recommended allocation is 1 to 400. School counselors is where we get the closest, their current allocation is 1 to 420, and the recommended allocation is 1 to 250. And for school nurses, the current allocation is 1 to 1,400, and recommended allocation for the standard, non-medically needy population is 1 to 750. So we certainly are under-allocated in this, for these professionals, and again, the need continues to grow with each year. We just have more and more students who come with, come to us with needs. So when, at the last meeting, when you all talked about the possible use for some of the village money, I think that this is an area that you could discuss, if you'd be willing, to maybe bring some of these allocations more in line with what's recommended. So I want to give you a chance to ask questions, but I want to thank you sincerely for your commitment and your open hearts to continue to, to bring mental health to the foreground and help our students move forward and deal with some of their issues. Thank you. And what questions can I answer?
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The current, so like, let's say, school psychologists, we're hiring six more, does, is this current allocation include those six more? Does it get better with those, those few six people we're adding?
So those six people who I'm hoping to hire are mental health specialists, they're not school psychologists. School psychologists have specialized training in assessment and doing evaluation and data, and they have kind of a special, they are mental health-trained as well, but they, right now, are not delivering therapy. I want to hire six people who can do therapy with kids who might need therapy. Do you know what I mean? They'll have a variety of skills, but the one that nobody else will have will be that licensure in the mental health field where they can actually do that high-level, high-need therapy. So no, we aren't hiring any more school psychologists right now.
I have a couple, if you want to ask.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, as for the Um, as for the screening, have we looked at privacy or HIPAA, or, I, I don't know if we fall under HIPAA, but like-
We don't.
Obviously, we're going to, this is not disaggregated data, this is going to be kids' names and an actual screening.
Yes, and along with that is parent consent. Do we act, do we ask for an active, do we ask for a passive, do we just give them opt-out? There are a lot of very serious things to consider, so absolutely, yes, we are talking about privacy. The state is giving us guidance, but really, they're wanting it to be up to the individual schools, because they want us to do what they believe our districts need. So, yeah, absolutely, we're considering privacy. I will tell you, one thing that's very appealing to me that many districts are doing is they are including the data point of a universal screener with the early warning data. So, instead of just having a data point on its own that indicates something, they're collapsing it, and, and so you'll have-
A dashboard?
You'll have a dashboard, and it'll have multiple data points, and so you can make some decision-making based on not just the universal screener, but other things as well, performance. So, that's one way to make it a little bit more diffuse in its power, that universal screener, but to answer your question, absolutely, yes.
Um, and then, what about, you mentioned, I saw Sanford Harmony on there, but not all of our schools have SEL programs, which is like, character-building programs. So, are we implementing those, like, at the elementary? And then, what are we doing at the middle and high? Because I know a lot of the programs are really geared towards elementary age.
They are, you're correct, I'm going back for my own benefit. What we are trying to do is, again, this is not a finished plan, but I'm trying to build up that repertoire of options that they have. So, Sanford Harmony is a fantastic option for elementary. What we have, LEAPs is a, is a very good option for middle and high, restorative practices. Check and Connect is a, is a state-sponsored, it would be a free program, mentorship program that is evidence-based and has a lot of meat behind it, very, very successful when schools are using it. So, that might be a possibility if, if a school wants to build a very strong mentoring program. So, I am trying to build this list so that there are more options, but by the time we get there, Dr. Burns, I'm really hoping that there will be several to choose from for each school.
Was it going to be, are you planning on there being a program in every school, or is it just up to the school?
Well, I hope that it won't be up to the school whether or not they have a program. I think that we need to be addressing mental health needs at every school in the district, period. How they do it, I think they should have some decision-making power over, because all their teams are a little different, their culture's a little bit different, but I, I would, I would like to strongly recommend that each school is compelled to address it in some way.
Then, my last question is about, in some other counties, I've heard of trauma-informed schools.
Oh, yes.
Do we have, do we have anyone gearing up towards that?
So, an idea that I have, I tried to go through my plan so quickly, but it's this massive plan, but another idea that I have is to do some sort of a mental health focus each year, and the first year, what I'd like to do is trauma-informed schools, because there's so much information out there now, and what we can do is deliver that in a variety of ways. I'm thinking about things like lunch and learn, online learning, there are modules that teachers can do in 15 minutes that give them little snippets of information about trauma-informed care. We have specialists from the state who are willing to come in and train everyone we want trained.
Can you define that for the public?
Trauma-informed care? Yes, absolutely. So, considering how students function from the viewpoint of trauma-informed care, really has to do with us thinking about students' behavior in a different way. So, instead of, so if a student acts out, instead of really saying to the student, "Why are you acting that way? Why are you, why are you being so difficult today?" Instead, we kind of change our mindset and think about what must have happened to that student today or in their past that has led to them behaving the way that they are today. And it really has, it has to do with the way we talk to children, with providing a supportive environment that acknowledges that we all have experienced trauma, and it affects how we exist today. I think that that's one of the most important things we can do for our schools, is to bring that new philosophy for how we talk to kids and how we support children this first year. So, I re, I am going to build that in hopefully somehow, but I agree with you, that's a great component.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mathias, did you have a question?
Yeah, or more a comment. I had the opportunity to speak before the Lake 100, a group of businessmen, hospitals belong to it, and they came up to me later and said, "One of the most difficult things is going to be recruiting again, just like we're having difficulty recruiting for the Guardian program, also finding those professionals that, that they have holes right now they've not been able to fill." And, but everyone said they're more than willing to sit down with you and see how that collaboratively you could work together. So, I would encourage us to reach out into the community, to be with those hospital partners.
I would love that, if I could-
I'll get the names, I'll get the names. You bet.
Wonderful.
So, I don't know if you have it on your calendar, but as we're thinking about a workshop to go over the final, final draft, our options are July the 16th, as a next, the next workshop. We will not have a workshop on July the 2nd because of the holiday week. The following week is a regular board meeting, and so that gives us the 16th. If that is too early, the next one is July the 30th, which puts you right up to your August 1st deadline. So, we can let the board know, but if you'll go ahead and, and let us know which of those two would work best. We do want to have a July 16th workshop, since we're talking about that for, but, for the budget, and so, I know that Mr. Ward is working on that, to, to get that on your calendar as well.
Cool.
Great. Thank you again, very much.
Do we have a recommendation?
Yep.
Superintendent?
Thank you so much, Dr. Landry, excellent job. So, this item was with the staffing plan, which is why it was pulled to discussion, so it's 11.02, recommend approval of the revisions to the 1819 district staffing plan that included these mental health specialists, the district safety and security specialist, and the manager, school safety, these were actually jobs descriptions.
Board members?
Second.
Second to Dr. Burns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, superintendent, you're on your report.
We are. So, last week, as you're aware, we did receive our FSA and EOC data, some of it, at least the proficiency numbers for 2018. As a district, we went up in most every area with no significant declines, with a few percentile drops in a few areas, but we saw great gains in grade five and grade eight science, so I want to give those teachers a big shout-out, that that was tremendous some of the growth that we saw there, where we exceeded the state average and was one of our, certainly one of our shining spots, so thank you to those teachers. And in Algebra I, we also saw a, an increase of six percentile points compared to last year, and in our English Language Arts scores improved in six of the eight grade levels, with grade eight showing the highest achievement gain, so good, good job for ELI teachers in grade eight. We are still awaiting a lot of the other components that will constitute the school and district grade, and that being the, of our learning gains, we have not received that information yet, so we'll see that coming in the, I'm sure, in the very near future. And keep you abreast of those, this information has been posted on our website for anyone who has not been able to have access to that information and would like to look at our school and district scores thus far. To highlight a few of the things happening in our schools, congratulations to Leesburg High School students in Action Chapter. They are one example of some of the great things happening outside of our classrooms, and they're going to be honored in Washington DC this week for their community service, and their newest project is the BE, that is B-E-E, Loved Campaign, which supports neighbors in need, and their chapter has raised $1,200 and contributed 2,478 volunteer hours this year. Also, congratulations to Menial Charter, they are one of nine in the state that were recognized by the Commissioner of Education for outstanding family and community involvement based on their Reading Rodeo Project that they had going on, that was really celebrating literacy with parents in the community. And then also to Pine Ridge Elementary, that was recognized as a Florida Gold Model School for its Positive Behavior Support Program, and we'll certainly be looking at them and their program to replicate as we talk about some of these SEL and other positive things that are happening in our schools. And lastly, I just want to thank the Lake County Sheriff's Office, they have been very busy this summer, as we just mentioned, they're going to be doing a lot of Guardian training in the coming weeks, but they have also been training our teachers with an active shooter awareness course, similar to the ones that we all went through, and we have had over 500 teachers trained thus far this summer in that. So, thank you to those teachers who are giving up their time, their commitment to ensure the safety of our kids by participating in this training, and thank you to the Lake County Sheriff's Office, their partnership and support has been tremendous, and we, we certainly couldn't be doing this work to ensure our schools' safety without their involvement. So, thank you to them. Lastly, I had one letter of condolence, and that was to Karen Briggs, our Director of Finance, her sister passed away, her sister was Barbara Faith Kyler, and our condolences to her family.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mathias?
Very quickly, the one thing that's, there's a benefit of, of every, every four years getting that, that opportunity to go out and speak about your record and speak about the opportunities and the great things that are going on in the district, is you also hear things that are just simply not true. And on Facebook and, and in the debate circuit, there has been this, this mantra of the morale of our, of our teachers and this high turnover and 20%, and we're bleeding, and so looking into that data and, and to put it on the record, because perception becomes reality, and that will not stand with me, that we have 13, we have 86.4% of retention, 13.6% leave, but of that 13%, there are a number of different reasons. But let's talk about for just one second and the only category, which is those that leave the district, and that, that genuinely just aren't happy. And we have some 3,000 teachers, and the number is eight. E-I-G-H-T, not huge. So, I just want to just put that out there and be very clear, that when one speaks about our district, I would ask that they research and get their information correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Dr. Burns?
I turned my mic off. I, I went to the FSVA conference last week as your representative. It was a surprisingly quiet conference, I think that the members are all waiting to find out who's the governor, and so, as for what's going on in the legislature, I really couldn't say that much of anything. There's really not even chatter about what's going to be the hot topic next year. I think everyone's just waiting for the new governor and the new representatives, and they spoke a lot about the Marjorie Stonem Douglas Act, which we've spoken a lot about, so that nothing there was very new. There was a nice presentation on active shooter training, which I ended up sitting through, even though I was like, "Oh, I've already done this." And he had a couple of nice little informational nuggets, but other than that, it was less engaging than usual. And then, oh, I wanted to ask, since you brought up the, um, Steve, since you brought up the writ of mandamus, is that the correct phrase?
Yes.
Okay. Can, we last year had talked about the writ of mandamus for the paper and pencil FSA test, and if we were to encourage the, the state to do that, we would have to do that about now, as opposed to in like, January, which is what we, when we had talked about it. Can we at least find out where the state is on the paper and pencil law for the FSA? I, I would imagine Joy Frank would probably-
Because as I recall, we were talking about that last year, they had a date by which they had to set some guidelines for the rest of the program.
So, if, if they're actually going to go through, I mean, last year, we found out that they, all that they would do for the paper and pencil FSA was prepare for next year. So, it's next year, so hopefully, we might get it this year.
I'll check into it.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Burns.
I'm just going to throw out a little PSA for your local library. You know, my kids have been enjoying the number of events hosted at Cooper, and I'm sure they're going on throughout the county, whether you're going to the library to see a magic show, or reptiles, or clowns, if that doesn't terrify you, or, or Harry Potter parties, or, or you name it, there's so many events going on, you know, different reading incentives to encourage children to, to have some fun with it, and while you're there, you know, they might just find a good book to read. So, you know, the summer's not over, it's not too late to, to dive into a good one, and, you know, so that's my, my encouragement of the week, read a good book.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Mr. Campbell?
Just a couple of things real quick. I attended the City of Taveries Council Meeting with the superintendent last week, along with the principal from Taveries Elementary, and they unanimously, four to one, were for doing this, and we understood why the one voted no, but I, I think also, this is a great thing with the City of Taveries, that they are willing to do this. Also, superintendent, as my recall, was the Chief of Police from Astetula, his concern was there's a little bit of difference, but since our salary has come up, that might even weigh that part from them. Also, one of the things that we talked about is the referendum, we need to make sure we stay on top of this and get it out there and promote, and this is a way that maybe we can get the cities to get on board with us also, to help us to sponsor this. And, Mr. Dodd, congratulations. It feels nice not to have to worry about getting out there that night, but-
I'm just glad I don't have to talk behind him, because the other one, it's hard to follow him.
But yes, and then also, I, I spoke to, I was at a retirement benefit for one of our principals that went out unknowingly at the last minute. I found out, I talked to her the last day of school, she didn't say nothing to me about retiring, and then I found out that she was, but I went to her retirement party, and I talked with some of the administration that was there that has went through the training, and they were, they were really amazed at what they went through and, and what happened, and opened up their eyes as well. So, I, I think this is something that's going to be great for Lake County, and for our, our kids, our students, or our faculty and staff that's at the schools, to protect them and make sure we're doing the right thing going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I've been seeing a lot of posts on Facebook as well, from teachers that have gone through the training that are really pleased with it, so I'm anxious to see how that impacts our safety as well. Ms. Chrissy Fulker, who is actually here in the audience, is going to be our committee member for the Sales Certex Oversight Committee. We will be letting the commission know that you are our representative, so thank you for being willing to serve in that capacity for us. I also wanted to say congratulations on the scores, I had that written down as well, I look forward to getting some of the other results and really delving into those, but it looks to be really good. And I had something else I was going to say, and I totally forgot what it was, so that's my fault for not writing it down. Do you have something else, Dr. Burns, and I go remember it?
I did, I'll not be at the next board meeting.
Oh, good. Oh, hang on, and, that was not what I was going to say. I did remember though, but Mr. Campbell, did you, you turned your microphone on?
Well, I wasn't planning to be here either, but if she's not going to be here, so that we make sure we do have a quorum in case something was-
We only need three.
I know, but if something should happen to one of the three, I'm, I'm planning on leaving that day and being on the road, so-
You'll be here?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be all right, it'll be just-
All right, then, good.
The 11?
Okay, and that, right, and, and I did remember, so for, for us, it is very important, I was going to ask superintendent if we could get together with the Communications Department and work on something that would draft to what we're going to spend the dollars on for the three-quarter mill. I had the opportunity to go to the Kiwanis Lunch in Umatilla today and did speak about it, and I know at least Mr. Mathias and I will be out on the campaign trail, which will give us access to several citizens to educate on the three-quarter mill as well, and then any other additional committees or, or people that we meet on a daily basis, if we had some publication to give to them about the dollars, that'd be awesome. They did ask me some questions about it today, so I know I'd like to be prepared to tell them what exactly we're going to do with those dollars. And I will also encourage everybody, because of all this, the topic of campaigning, the governor race is so important this year, so we can ask questions about education and standards and assessments, and, you know, I, I know all of us know the importance of that duty, and I would encourage all of you that are here, obviously, are here for a reason, that we have huge implications for education depending on who we elect, so do your civic duty and research candidates.